All right, it's 5:30. A call to order, the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Meeting. Item number two is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
I'll move to approve the Order of the Agenda.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the Order of the Agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda pass. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from our April 10th meeting as published.
I'll motion that we approve as published.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. Item number four, this is a continued topic, A23-4 for the Sandhills Sixth Edition Replant and Rezoning. I won't read the whole thing.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. We are actually waiting for the applicant to arrive yet.
Should we skip over and go back?
I think that would be preferable if that's already the goal.
Anybody opposed to that?
It's not in the order of the agenda that I approve.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go back to it then. So, item number five, Public Hearing, A23-12, The Wilds North Pond First Edition, a replot of Lot 1, Block 1, Tevi Edition, replot of Lot 1, Block 1, Schatz Ranch First Edition, replot of Lot 19, Block 2, of Wilds Fourth Edition and plot of part of southeast quarter, Section 31, township 139 North Range, 49 West City, West Fargo, North Dakota. Sveilisen Tevi. I apologize for screwing up the pronunciation of those names. That was a mouthful.
All right. So, this application is a... The purpose of this application is for a subdivision for two primary reasons. One is to transfer a small swath of city-owned land to some adjacent property owners next to an existing city pond. And then the second, kind of smaller reason, is just to clean up some of the subdivision work in this area. Included in your packet is the subdivision plat. I will just note really quickly that this plat has been through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Commission approval process previously, went through a couple of years ago. However, it was never ultimately signed by the owner and never recorded. And so, the all property... All entities involved are bringing this back for... To finish out that process essentially. So, the subdivision itself includes two different tracks... Or, excuse me, three different tracts of land. I'll just pull up the aerial image here to give you kind of a lay of the land here. This is just west of Cheyenne Street, just south of 47th Avenue West. The properties involved are a city-owned detention pond here, and then two residential... Larger residential lots along the west side of Cheyenne Street. Just because there's no parcel lines on this map here, I will draw your attention over to our interactive map just to help illustrate what's going on here. So, as you can see, on the northwest and south sides of the existing pond, the lot lines of the adjacent private lots go up to or into the water line of the pond. On the east side, however, the private property stops short, 50 to 80 feet short of the water line, which is not typical and not typically how the city handles stormwater ponds. And so, the intention, the adjacent property owners would like to make use of the ponds, both to draw water from the pond as well as drain water into the pond, typical to any other adjacent lot to a city-owned pond. And the city desires to give up that land in order for the adjacent property owners to maintain the grass area. The plat itself includes applicable subdivision... Or, excuse me, applicable easements to maintain the ability for that stormwater pond to rise during times of heavy rainfalls and also to maintain the city's infrastructure associated with the pond itself. So, that's the primary intent of the subdivision plat. And then, the other thing I noted, the second reason is just you can see this little triangle piece here. This is a little remnant parcel that, for whatever reason, was never included in any of the adjacent subdivisions in this area. So, the plat will clean that up as well and incorporate it into the private ownership. I'll flip back to the plat now so you can see what that ultimately will end up looking like. You can see the property line essentially just jumps over a little bit, and then there'll be some easements established to continue use of that area for stormwater purposes. So, that's the intention here, just some lot line cleanup. There is a zone change associated with this plat that was actually previously approved two years ago. That zone change is complete, and so, there's no need to do any zoning work with this application here. The proposed plat complies with all of our applicable subdivision regulations, and in fact, the purpose is bring us into compliance with our typical policies and procedures for stormwater ponds. And so, the recommendation before you tonight is to recommend approval... Or, recommend approval of the subdivision plat to the City Commission approving the preliminary plat. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
This is a public hearing.
Yes, it is a public hearing item.
So, I'll open it up for any comments or input from the public at this time. Seeing none, I'll close that section. Commissioners, questions, concerns? We're just moving along, and it's to the benefit of all parties.
Correct.
Yep.
I'll move to approve as presented, according to the recommendation there, with single recommendation. Let's approve it. All right.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application for the transfer of the property. Any further discussion required before vote?
I got one question. So, the private land owner is getting a little sliver of additional land. Does the city ever, you know, ask people to pay for that? I know it's kind of unusable and whatever, but is there any value assigned to this?
I think the value, in staff's opinion, is not having to maintain that property any longer. There is costs associated with that, and so, it's seen as kind of mutually beneficial to all parties involved is how I would summarize that.
Thanks.
Any other discussion required before votes? Been moved and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. So, is the applicant here now for A23-4?
Yes.
We will go back to item number four in the agenda. A discussion on the continued Sandhills Sixth Edition Replant and Rezoning.
All right. So, item number four is an item that has been continued for the past several months, Sandhills Sixth Edition. This was last heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 14th of this year. At that meeting, the action from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to table that... Table that item in order for the applicant to work with the adjacent property owners on some... To address a lot of the concerns that were raised at that meeting. Included in the packet is just a brief memo with some attachments just to... For some frame of reference for folks, it's been a few months, and so, the area in question that we're talking about here tonight is the area north of I-94, just west of 26th Street Northwest, so just north of Main Avenue here, part of the Sandhills area, currently part of the Meadowbrook Park subdivision, which was originally platted when this area was in the county outside of city limits back in the 1950s, about 70 years ago. The city, I think it was something like 20 years ago, 10 to 20 years ago, annexed this land. The area is currently zoned agricultural, and we've got an application to rezon the property for industrial development. The rezon also includes some public zoning for things like stormwater... Stormwater ponds. And then, the subdivision, which would replat the existing lots into lots in right-of-way that are more conducive to the applicant's intention of developing this area for industrial development. So, those are some of the attachments that are included. I just wanted to briefly provide that very brief update. The applicant wanted to provide you all with an update from the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February 14th, with the intention of having a brief discussion here tonight with you all, with the intended action of continuing this one more month to the June 13th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, at which time they hope to be back in front of you with a request for action. So, for purposes of today, it's really... The intention here is just to have some additional discussion on this and then continue it one more month to continue to work through some of those final details. So, with that, I will hand it off to the applicant to provide that update, and I'm here as well to engage as needed.
Austin Morris, Enclave Development. I'll provide a brief update, but I want to recap our premise in bringing forward this development prior to February 14th meeting just a little bit. So, the goal with bringing forth the industrial development along Main was a few-fold. One, back prior to buying the land, we inquired with the city on proposing an industrial development in this area. We received generally feedback, probably call it 18 months ago, that the area, from a guided perspective, made sense for industrial. Then, we inquired about the natural infrastructure needs in order to accommodate a development that would have $40 to $50 million of assessed value and potential job producers, manufacturers, warehouse logistics providers for the community. We also discussed the desire to maintain a corridor overlay along Main Avenue because it's an important corridor for West Fargo's entry point from I-94 onto Main, and that this was desired to be a quality development. Post that, as we move forward with the proposed plan to develop industrial properties, we recognize the issue, I would say, the issue that if we called for infrastructure from a public improvement standpoint, that that would also be calling for special assessments for this area, which would be spread per city policy, which would inevitably impact potential people who own lots that we don't own within the area, especially north of our lots. Additionally, it would impact homeowners that have owned homes out here for many years who have already experienced special assessments as a result of industrial developments further north of them. So, we endeavored to focus on a plan with Casey and team at West Fargo. How could we do the development and get public improvements for the development to support the goal without incurring any special assessments on homeowners within this area, landowners within this area that weren't participating in the potential benefit of the development? And that was the premise all along from the start. Now, fast forward probably to the February 14th meeting when we initially met here, we visited about the same development, but one thing that changed that was pause to visit with the homeowners. This was the first opportunity on February 14th that we had to hear the homeowners speak in front of you guys, visit with the homeowners outside of the chambers briefly on their concerns of special assessments, and later figure out potential solution. Since February 14th, now quite a bit has happened in the background, both from a future West Fargo need standpoint related to potential interchange acquisition of certain land within the land that we own on this development, discussing with that how that would work. We ordered an appraisal for that portion of land to the benefit of City of West Fargo, so we can discuss that later. But, our priority in between then and now was to figure out a solution with economic development. Had a number of meetings with Mr. Shockley and team members on how do we acquire properties at values from an assessed value standpoint that are well above and beyond the actual market value on a per-square-foot standpoint if this is going to be future developable property? And how do we navigate the sensitivities with visiting with homeowners, some of which who will want to sell, some of which who have no interest in selling? And navigate the balance between achieving the city, I should say, the homeowners, certain homeowners' goals of we would like to be bought out at a fair value, and we would like to move elsewhere, and other homeowners, we would like to be bought out, but we have a challenge with being bought out at current assessed value or 110% of assessed value because what else can we buy elsewhere? Those are things we've navigated since then. We did submit letters to six homeowners and six landowners. We focused first and foremost on the homeowners because the land piece of it to us was something we could figure out at a later date without the sensitivities associated with someone's residence and where they've lived for many, many years. We've made some headway on the homeowner front, not only from a communication standpoint, but we have more headway to make. We have a couple folks that are interested in entertaining offers, furthering those discussions. One individual interested in selling, a few others were continuing those meetings with, and that the gap, the challenge for us is going to be assessed value or a percentage of assessed value compared to what someone wants. And I think that we still have work to do on navigate, and that's where we're at on that process. We'd like to try and do our best to accommodate a solution that allows public improvements to go through, allows the development to take place, which we believe is a really positive thing for the City of West Fargo, while not incurring special assessments on any adjacent lot owners through the district that we proposed before. So, I'd love to hear from you guys and learn more about what your priorities are and learn more from you, any questions you have, before we get to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll... You know, let me ask a question and then maybe try to express what we were saying last time we met on this. So, it sounds like with the progress made on potential agreements on transfer of ownership of more properties, you'd be changing the lines of what is being proposed and make it more comprehensive for the area?
Yep.
With some exceptions because there are individuals that don't wish to participate?
Yep.
Okay. So, you'll be proposing an amended or modified plot change?
It depends on if we include some of the lot slash homeowner lots within this plat request because some wouldn't be immediately adjacent to the plat that we're requesting. But, I think what in visiting with Aaron, what he'd like to see proposed is how do we see, even if the plat changes slightly, but how do we see the development progressing five years down the road if additional lot owners decide to sell? And what would be planned on the land that we're not developing, and how would that be serviced?
Okay. Well, I mean, that was the general, I'll say objection to moving forward at that time, but concern with moving forward was it didn't address the longer-term planning or the immediate needs of those that are affected. So, from my perspective, it sounds like you're moving towards the direction of what we requested. Commissioners, anybody else have thoughts, inputs to provide?
Well, work hard at it.
Doing our best.
I mean, if people want to get out of there, let's find a way somehow between economic development and developer. Let's find a way to get them... Make them whole.
Yeah. Excuse me. Question I've got for staff or city attorney is, any economic development tax being utilized for this?
It could be. That would be a commission decision, but it could be.
But, right now, that's not part of the equation.
We have not received that direction from the City Commission.
Just seems to me it's a reasonable use of that tax, which at least a year ago, when I checked, we had a lot in the sales tax kitty. I'm not saying you just buy them all out utilizing that, but that seems to be a tool we have sitting in the drawer that we're not using. And my problem with this going forward, as good as intention is that they seem to have, is once they get their plat approved or start moving forward and there's discussion still in place, I think that just goes to the wayside.
Incentive, right. Yep.
I think it has to... Sure, maybe people want to stay there, but this is their time to either make a deal or not make a deal. Because once that development gets going, it sounds like they got a development, a good development planned. And I think the city, in my opinion, should stand behind that and help out in what way we can. That's up to the commission, of course. But, once they get rolling on it, I'm sorry, these people's property, it's going to be worth the land price if someone needs the land. So, that's just my opinion. I think I'm not going to vote for going forward if there's not a definitive answer on all the properties of the individuals. And that's either yes, I'll accept something, or no, I won't. No, if they say no, then they're going to have to live with whatever the future may be, so.
Can, Mr. Chair, can we, as a planning commission, make some kind of statement that we want the City Commission to...
Consider that?
Consider something like this. I mean, and, you know...
I don't know. Can we?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
Mr. Shockley, is that appropriate?
Yeah, the mics.
We do. I'm the minutes now.
From staff's perspective, I think you can certainly, you know, make any statement you'd like, and we can certainly forward that along to the City Commission. You know, however, you know, the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission is fairly well-defined by sentry code and city ordinance, and so, you know, whether or not they... How they use that comment, I guess, is ultimately up to them.
Yeah. And so, perhaps I'll paraphrase. I'd like to put in records that our concern is that it would not be comprehensive and address all the concerned parties if it does not include resolution on every affected property in the area. And then, if it would be beneficial to include support from the commission through tax incentive, we would support that so that whatever we're voting on from a replot and/or rezoning doesn't leave out landowners or property owners in the area.
And sir, what did you... I think you stated a value you thought would be the development of this area. Do you have that number again?
Forty million plus for the development of the southern quadrant that we're planning on plating.
Okay, I'll just make an opinion. Sounds like a really good thing for the city to get behind and support in some way, and I don't think... My personal opinion is I don't think we're being unreasonable trying to take care of these people. And I know you bought this from a different...
Yep.
The first developers that were here, when they got started, it was made very clear that these folks had to be taken care of and dealt with, you know? And obviously, you bought it from someone else who made certain promises or whatever. So, I think it's very important that we just can't keep kicking this down... Can down the road to whether it's one or two cans, and then those folks had to deal with it, you know, three, four, or five years ago when they ultimately decided to move. So...
Yep. The only comment I would make is that from a practicality standpoint of all the remaining individual lots out there, from my perspective, someone with a residence on it has a potential impact of this development. Someone who owns a vacant lot out here doesn't have the same, in my mind, priority to help support from... And this is just from a City of West Fargo standpoint, if we're supporting folks that built their residence out here, that's my priority. That's been my priority and our focus. If someone owns a lot out here that they either own in-state, out-of-state, many of them out-of-state, if they elect not to sell, that's their option from my standpoint. Similar to values on homes, we got to get to an appropriate value that's fair.
I think the commission here...
Yeah, our concern, or at least my concern, is the homeowners. The land is the land.
Yep.
That, you know, if you don't need to acquire that piece of land, well, they can worry about selling it whenever then.
And they could probably build something, develop it, or do something at some future date that still qualifies under the zoning at that point in time. Thank you.
I guess we should vote to continue this item?
Move to continue.
Second.
Okay, we're moving second to continue this to our June 13th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion continued. Thank you for the update and continued effort. Item number six, Downtown Master Plan Project Update.
All right. So, I know we've touched base on this a couple of times in our recent meetings, but I just wanted to provide you all with a quick update because the project has officially kicked off as of last week. Included in your packet is just a brief memo with a link to the project website, which was, I think, just launched last Wednesday. I know our communication staff is getting ready to push out some social media content in order to kind of spread the word that this website is now live. And so, you know, just in terms of a quick summary, as you all know, the city received a grant from the City of North Dakota to help fund this project. Ultimately, with you all, your recommendation, the City Commission did elect to move forward with this effort at the beginning of this year. We put together a selection committee, which included the chair and vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which ultimately selected Bolton and Mink to help the city and lead this effort. Over the past month or so, they've been... The project team at Bolton and Mink has been kind of getting swooled up, if you will, to get ready for this kickoff, which took place last week. Chair Kolb is on the project steering committee, and so, there was an initial four-hour work session, so appreciate your time on that, which was kind of the official, you know, first engagement of... Out of this project. In addition to that steering committee meeting work session, they also had two focus groups. One was focused on residents in the downtown and downtown area, and the other was focused on business and businesses and development in the downtown area. Outside of that, the... So, like I said, it's just gotten kicked off, and the... If I were to summarize it, I would say they are in the data collection phase, the input phase. So, this is really the start of their public input collection, just to hear the initial, you know, thoughts, ideas, concerns, visions, kind of everything and anything related to downtown the team is interested in hearing about. And so, to that end, the Downtown Master Plan Project Website is live. We just updated our own city website, so if you go navigate on the city website to the Planning and Zoning page, there's a little Downtown Master Plan link here. That might be the simplest way to find it, and that'll bring you to the project page here. The project page, just to highlight a few quick things, it starts out with a contact form, interest form, so anybody that's interested in signing up for email updates throughout the life of the project can just submit their information, phone and email preferences here. They'll be added to that distribution list, so any future public engagement opportunities, future surveys, any project updates will be sent out via email in the future to that list. Includes a brief project overview with kind of a general map of the study area, which again is primarily focused on Cheyenne and Main Avenue and then the surrounding blocks. Project timeline, I know we've talked about this in the past, but due to the constraints of the grant that we received, the project has to be substantially complete by October 1st, so we're looking to have a draft complete by that point in time. And then, again, there's kind of four main focus areas of this effort. Placemaking is kind of the main one. That's the one that... That's really what the grant covers for the most part. We're also looking at parking downtown, business and economic development, as well as kind of future growth and expansion, focusing on that, the transition area. as well as kind of future growth and expansion, focusing on that, the transition area, if you will, between the core of downtown and the surrounding contexts such as adjacent neighborhoods. So that's kind of the four main focus areas to start with. However, based on what the team hears through the public input, you know, that will very much determine the future trajectory of the study as well. They've included some, you know, initial demographic information as they start to collect some of their data. They do have a coloring sheet activity, so anybody, including, you know, children, can fill that out with their vision for what downtown should look like. And then there is the initial public surveys included here as well. So if you were to just click on this, there's a brief survey asking for some initial public input. There will likely be, you know, different surveys. This project website will be kind of a living website, so it will change and questions will be, you know, this survey will be taken down in the future and a new survey will be put up as we move through the different phases of the project itself. And then kind of the big maybe showpiece of this website is this mapping feature that they've got, which utilizes GIS, kind of interactive map here. You know, for anybody that wants a tour, there's this little tour button that'll help kind of orient you with what the different features are of this platform. But if you get into it, it's just a map of downtown and you can zoom in and out, navigate to different areas of downtown, and then use these little button features on the side here to, you know, if you've got a parking comment or a wayfinding or, you know, anything else, you can select the appropriate tool, find that location on the map that you're referring to, click on that, and then you're able to type in your comment right at that exact location. And then it's interactive where you can see everybody else's comments and people can comment on other people's comments. And so it's a way to kind of engage the public in a, in a unique way utilizing some of GIS technology there. So that's kind of the website right now. Again, it's just kicking off, so a lot more to come in the future, but I'll keep you all kind of abreast of what's going on as we move throughout different phases of this project. The consultant team does plan on having little pop-up events at different events downtown, like Cruise Night, for example, Westfast, things like that. So as you're out and about at some of those, be on the lookout. And in the meantime, feel free to reach out to me directly if you've got, you know, any sort of comment or if you want to chat about this project at all. But if you have just, you know, minor comments here and there, feel free to go to the website and enter that right in there. And I would ask too that you, if you're able, just to send out the link to all of your friends, colleagues, associates, anybody else to help spread the word at this point, so.
Aaron, regarding that, do you want feedback from West Fargo residents exclusively or any metro area resident or?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I have a couple of things on that note. One, I would just mention that we want to make sure that we're hearing from all West Fargo residents. I've been asked before, you know, is this just for downtown residents? The answer is no. This is the, you know, the City of West Fargo's downtown area and as such, we want to hear from all residents. I think relating to folks outside of West Fargo, I think it's helpful to hear, you know, some of their comments and feedback as well, you know, their perceptions as visitors. That's certainly one of the reasons for the grant. The grant itself was from the North Dakota Department of Commerce and with the intention of finding ways to leverage placemaking as an economic development tool for enhancement of quality of life, attracting businesses, attracting people to come check out downtown West Fargo. So all of the above.
Aaron, comment, question. Main Avenue is US Highway 10. When we redid Main Avenue a few years back, we, as a city, struggled dealing with the DOT because the DOT reminded us many times that it's US Highway 10, it's the United States Highway, and they're gonna call the shots and decide on the design features and the traffic flow and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, last week when they had a little presentation from those NDSU kids, they had some wonderful thoughts, ideas along Main Avenue, all of which couldn't happen because of the DOT status or position on Highway 10. The question is, is through this study, does it make sense to visit that question with the DOT and/or, I don't know if the city can take that over as a local street or not. I don't know what the position of the state on letting the city have control of that. But I know it was, there's a lot of consternation with the Main Avenue property owners and a lot of them just said, well, heck with it, I'm not gonna put a dime back in my property. And some of it shows along Main Avenue, they did it as a protest. But it was too bad that what they wanted to see at the time when we had somewhat of an opportunity, the DOT said, no, no, this is a highway, we're getting cars through here, and you want our money, which yes, we do, we want your money. But it really thoroughly limited what we could do. And I think part of the study, I think, should take a look at that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's actually some of the early comments and feedback that the team heard as part of that, excuse me, initial kickoff meeting. And it's absolutely a question that the, that the team is wanting to have with the DOT. You know, I will say just, you know, in the planning world in general, DOTs are starting to come around to, you know, some of this walkability stuff and starting to recognize, you know, certainly some of the local importance of having, you know, slowing down traffic or accommodating some of those crossings at key places. I think, you know, just looking next door, downtown Fargo recently had some, you know, discussions with the DOT that, you know, five, 10 years ago would have been outside of the realm of possibilities, some might say. And so absolutely, I think it's worth revisiting. And I know the team is looking forward to some future discussions with the DOT to talk about some of those opportunities. So. Any other questions for me?
It's exciting.
Yeah, it is, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, are there any non-agenda items or things we add to the agenda?
I had a couple of quick announcements, if that's all right.
Sure.
The first one as was, I think, just mentioned, there was a NDSU presentation last, end of last week. So thanks for those that were able to attend. And I certainly know it's tough. It was a nice, warm spring day on the end of a day on a Friday. So we had that working against us from the start. But it was, there was a nice article in the Fargo Forum, if you didn't see it. I encourage you to check that out. The students did a really fantastic job putting together their vision. You know, we do emphasize that this was a completely student-led project and in no way, you know, is associated with the city's downtown master planning efforts here. But it did, it did provide a great opportunity, I think, to, you know, get people thinking about what the future possibility is in terms of visioning the future, you know, even if it's 30 years away. Some of the stuff that was shown is pretty grand. But I do, I intended to send this out prior, just didn't get a chance to do it, but I did, or I will get a copy of the link. I know they did have the video. It was a video presentation, should start with that. A video presentation that the students put together, basically a fly-through of the final design that they came up with for the downtown area. And I think that is on YouTube or some platform online. So I'll get that sent out to you guys so you can take a look if you haven't seen it yet. And then, yeah, just wanted to note that quick. And then the other quick thing I had was since our last meeting, Kathy Schwan was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unfortunately, she had a prior engagement and she let us know well in advance that unfortunately the first meeting that she was appointed to, she wasn't able to make it. But she should be here next month, hopefully. So hopefully you'll have a chance to visit with her prior to the meeting or after the meeting next month. So that's what I've got for updates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Agreed.
So move second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Mr. Benchandra, that was printing our agendas.
Well, it felt a little better that whole.
You were smart and printed your own.
Closer.
Good work, people.
Yeah, I think we're, it's incomplete. Doesn't address any of the needs. If we do this now, it's just another nail on the coffin, really. I don't know about that. There might be. Those folks in the back were here, that first one, and they seem to be nodding their head now.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you all.
Aaron, how's your staffing situation?
Well, the office manager position closes on Friday, so we've got a handful of that.
Well, I was trying to debate my competition, yeah.
Maybe I should mention you. But the senior planner, this is a tough one. We're at try number three right now, just to repost it down on Monday again. So it's, I think, gonna be a tough one to fill. We reclassified it from planner to senior planner and tried to try and get somebody with a little bit more experience. But if you can't get anybody on the third go-around to apply, it's actually hard work to think about how we can influence it. Do I do? You know, this weekend last week is a little busy, but, yeah, it's manageable so far.
Well, thanks for what you do.
Yeah, well, thank you guys.
Yeah, see you.
See ya.